Good afternoon. It is Wednesday, April 19, 2023. This is a school board workshop and the time is 12:00 PM. Board member Morgan will not be present at today's workshop. And in addition, Mr. Ramirez, Chief of Staff, will join us in lieu of the superintendent. Today on the agenda, we have the review of Neola policies and the agenda review for April 25, 2023. We will begin with the review of policies, 6,000 finances. Today's presenters are Neola Consultant Attorney Tom Young and Associate Annette Martison. Tom, if you will proceed from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, Acting Superintendent, Attorneys and staff, it's nice to be in front of you We'll proceed as we have in the past. By the way, thank you for my stool. As in the past, Mr. Chairman, we have, we are on the 6,000 series and it has been my practice and the board's practice for me to ask if there are questions concerning the 6,000 series. And if there are, we'll attempt to answer them, either myself or staff. And we'll try to proceed in serio- bottom, starting with the lowest number first, questions regarding the lowest number of the 6,000 series. So I'll await questions from the board.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions on the 6,000 policies? Yes, Ms. Patrica?
Thank you. 6320.02, Small Business Enterprise, I don't think this is a Neola policy. Is this from, I didn't see Neola at the bottom.
This is ours.
Okay, so in order to save their time, may I bring that up at the end after we dismiss Neola?
Yes, I say no problem with that.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Morgan is not here, but she did leave some notes for me. So she does have a question on 6107. And that will be B.
I don't see 6107 on the policy project revised.
Finances clean. Section B. I didn't know if there was some better language that we could use.
If someone wants to make it less awkward, we're open to suggestions, but I'm not sure what is awkward about it. Without a suggestion, I'm not sure how to proceed on this, without a suggestion as to what is awkward or what needs to be changed.
I'll leave it to the board to see whether or not they want to change the wording or if you are okay with it.
I'm just not sure, I don't see that there's like a verbs, a subject verb object structure to the sentence, so I'm not really sure what it says, like what's the action there? I don't know what it means. And my eyes were probably glazed over the first time I read it, but I'm just not really sure what it means. So if electronic records must be signed by electronic means, what? Fill in the blank, what does the rest of that mean?
So it's, go ahead, Tom, but I was going to say that if we look at the top sentence, it's really what the department may specify and that includes section B.
Okay.
That's saying, if you're going to use electronic records, you have to have an electronic signature.
So maybe just take out that first part. Just take out the if electronic records must be signed by electronic means, because the first sentence seems to already say that. I don't know.
I think it.
I'm at the will of the board.
It says a lot of electric.
That's fine.
I can understand where there might be confusion, because A, C, and D are complete sentences and complete thoughts, whereas B seems to be almost like listing something, so I don't know if electronic records must be signed by electrical means, comma, or maybe semicolon, colon, and then list the type of electronic signature that is required, the manner and format in which the electronic signature must be affixed, the identity of the electronic signature. It's almost like it's not a complete sentence, whereas A, C, and D are complete thoughts. So I completely understand why it's confusing. I think it could be simplified. If this all in B is talking about electronic signature, maybe we can simplify it down.
I'm open to suggestions.
All two have been made.
Tom, this is non-specific statutory language?
It is not statutory language.
Okay, so board members, let me do this, let me go back to the team on this one. Unfortunately, like sometimes in the past, Ms. Morgan and I have had an opportunity to review things and she's not here, so I'll go back with the team and we'll review that language.
And I'm sure that the language in substance will not change, so there's probably not need to bring this back to the board, unless the board wishes to see the change in language.
I agree.
I think that's the best course of action.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from Ms. Morgan?
Yes, there are.
Okay.
Some of these questions are more, I think, board discussion. She has a question on 6460, which is.
I think Ms. Patrico's was in front of that one, were you not, Ms. Patrica?
I'm sorry?
Were you, was your question preceding the 6400? Oh, no, you're going to bring that up at the end, okay.
Correct.
Yes, all right, so I'm sorry, if we don't, what was the, what was the number again?
6460.
6460, okay.
And so for this one, she has.
I would say this is not statutory. This is a best practice which Neola has recommended, but it is most important that this policy be consistent with the manner in which you do this business.
Okay. So she has here, I'm trying to find the sentence, it starts with furthermore, board members and school personnel shall not accept any compensation or payment. And her question is, it also says payment or a thing of value from a vendor. So her question is, does this thing of value include contributions to campaign accounts? And I think this would be more of a board discussion as to what you want to designate.
This same subject is addressed to the conflict of interest policy, which you have already reviewed. And the thing of value is defined there as, I'll recite what I think it meant, but what you adopted is that the thing of value is something which a reasonable person would construe as being submitted or presented to influence a decision that a board is to make. So I'm not sure whether or not you wish to change this, in keeping with that or not, but that this particular area is also addressed in the board bylaws under conflict of interest.
I would think it would mean any current, coming before the board, you can't, in the past, you can't know what's going to happen in the future. So like in a campaign, you may not make a set money from someone, and then in the future, they're doing business with the district, I don't know how.
Yeah, I can't imagine that.
How you would know that, yeah.
I can't, having run for the board in Tallahassee and Leon County and having accepted campaign contributions, I was never questioned about whether or not those campaign contributions were contrary to the policy or the law. So I can't imagine that this would be interpreted differently.
Yes, Ms. Jordan.
Perhaps it's, not necessarily is it, you cannot predict the future, but has that individual or vendor had work in the past, which would put him on the list of vendors, which would then make them eligible for more work?
I still think you're opening a can of worms there, because they may never, in the future, come before the board. You just don't know that, I mean.
Right. And again, when I ran for the board, vendors who did business with the board contributed to my campaign and others. And I'm sure that's occurred with most, if not all, of you at some point. So again, I cannot imagine this would be construed or interpreted to be a conflict or in violation of this policy. I don't know if the attorney has an opinion as to whether or not there needs to be a change in this to clarify that.
Yeah, I think Florida chapter 112 is very specific in terms of campaign contributions and what is required by board members to follow. I'm just reading off Mrs. Morgan's question, so that the board is aware and can have that discussion. So there's no legal requirement to change that language.
Okay, I think we can move on to the next question.
It's in the same policy. Her question is this, and again, this is for the board. Should there be a policy that requires staff to evaluate performance of those providing services to the district under contract, construction, legal, financial, et cetera? Do you want to include language about evaluation of contractors?
I assume we already do that. Is this on what, Ms. Patrica?
Would past performance be something that would be considered in the bidding process?
Yes.
So it's already built in, I think.
And I would also suggest that is probably, there is probably something in your contracts that would involve evaluation of the performance, ongoing evaluation of the performance.
I also, if I may, may I also think that's probably part of the responsibility of the individuals in different departments who are overseeing the work done by vendors, for them to be constantly evaluating to make sure the district needs are being met, the contracts are being followed. I think that's already baked into what we do.
So just to add to that, our terms and conditions is very specific and allows performance reviews, et cetera, that we can terminate if we're not getting the appropriate services. So to Ms. Patrica's point, it is built into the contract and that is part of the bid evaluation.
Thank you. Next question?
The only thing she had under 6460, the next one that she had was under 6510. And really, this question at this point is being addressed, I know, by the superintendent and his team. The question is, what about contract employees such as chiefs, attorneys? We need an additional policy for these. She's referring to the administrative salary schedule, and I know that they're working on that. The next question that she had was 72, oh, sorry, that was it for the 6,000s.
Okay, no more on the 6,000s. Does anyone else have any questions on the 6,000s? I had brought one up earlier in our discussions. It was under bad checks, if we could go, that was 6151. 6151, there you go. When I read this, it says when a check's returned marked insufficient funds, we will provide an opportunity for the payer to make proper payment or to arrange a satisfactory payment schedule. And then it says a payment not received within 15 days, or the schedule not adhered to, the money's, you know, the school board authorizes administration to remove the fee or charge from the district accounts receivable. I'm not sure where in there it says if there's a fee for a return check. And is that, if there is one, is that, if they make good within 15 days, is there a fee or is there not a fee? Because a lot of these checks could be small, and I'd hate to see someone hit with a big fee.
For a $10.
For a $10 check for a kid going on something, or for a book or something like that. And I just don't see that in here, I just don't know if we could.
Mr. Chairman, we do have staff ready and available to answer that question for you.
Okay, staff.
Good afternoon, Mike Haywood from the Internal Auditorium. We currently, parents currently do not pay fees for NSF checks. We just try to collect the amount that was bounced. That was the guidance we were given by prior boards.
Okay, I personally love that, that's fine. Any other discussion on that, or? It just wasn't real clear to me in the policy, and I just, since it didn't say any fee, I was hoping there was none. Okay, that was the only other one that I had, I think, seeing no others on the 6,000s. Let's move to the 7,000s.
Mike, just a comment.
Yes.
There were a lot of 6,000s, for which there were no questions. And I appreciate that, and one of the reasons that that typically occurs is because the board has confidence in its staff to make recommendations to them which are consistent with their current practice and consistent with the law. And I appreciate the board's response.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just also want to add that May 17 will be our last Neola workshop. At that workshop, there will be additional policies coming forward that are from the 6,000s.
Thank you.
And the end is therefore in sight.
We hear you. Okay, on the 7,000s, are there any questions? Any questions from the board? Ms. Morgan, do you have any questions?
This is with regards to one of the exceptions. And it's dealing with the ability of police and other licensed law enforcement officers and others, as approved by the superintendent on a case-by-case basis. You can see there was a change there, there's a concern as to whether or not it should be school board approving, superintendent approving, superintendent and school board approving based on the fact that we will have an elected superintendent.
I know our part and our, I'll let Ms. Jordan go first.
Thank you, that was, I know, I knew I had one more to ask Mr. DePree Bruno, so some of my questions on the 6,000 I had already asked, so I had my answer, but that was the other one that I was trying to, I had some concerns about too, because to me, I felt like, why would the superintendent give anybody permission, you know, who is that, who's he given permission to, to bring a weapon in? So I thought that was kind of odd to be in this, when I was reading this.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. Ms., through the chair, I'd like to ask Board Attorney DePree Bruno, we had actually discussed this a little bit before, could you, if it's all right from the dais, kind of go through the scenario, talked about when that would happen, if you're all right with that?
So this particular policy, for example, if you have an off-duty officer who is, has his weapon and is coming to a meeting, that's one thing this policy does cover it. It could be a situation where, for example, you have somebody who wants to carry their weapon that works for us and would like to carry the weapon, they would go to the superintendent and ask the superintendent if that was permissible. This question has come up in the past, but now that we're moving forward with the Guardian program, I don't know if this would be impactful. Right now, that policy has not yet been approved, so this may change once we get into the Guardian program. But that was what this particular sentence was to address, was those situations where somebody would come to the superintendent, I'm a former licensed, you know, police officer, I work here 24, almost 24/7 in some cases, and I would like to carry my weapon. So those are the different scenarios. Does that answer it, Mr.?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Jordan?
Sorry, and there was another one apart on the, the last paragraph as well, regarding notification or notices that are posted on the, at the schools, on buses, are we, do, I've never seen one posted on the bus, is there?
Mr. Ramirez, would you like to?
Through the chair, thank you very much. At this point, they, we do not, that has been conversation, discussion we're having with Chief Newlin, specifics of that, so, and conversations that we, something I'll bring back to the superintendent and staff to address.
And signs, if we do that, I'm sure will be in multiple languages, also not just English, so that'd be important. Yeah, we should follow through on that, because it does say the superintendent shall, which versus, you know, may. So I think we definitely need to make that, I'm for that policy myself.
So.
Yes.
So I kind of like the addition of the language, if you could go up a little bit, and the school board for both, from both sides. It should, I think it should be a governance team decision. And let's say we have somebody who makes a request with the superintendent, the superintendent says no, then the board can say, yes, you're permitted. Or if the superintendent says yes, and the board for some reason doesn't think it's a good idea for that individual, then the board can, you know what I mean? It makes it part, it makes it a governance team decision instead of an individual person's decision, with the understanding that we are going to have an elected person in that role, which can isolate the superintendent from the board, and this would require it to be everybody together. So I like the addition of the language by Ms. Morgan, those are my comments. And I forgot to turn my microphone on, I'm sorry.
So I'm assuming from what you said, that if it says and the school board, it would have to be a yes, yes, not, because it does not say or, so.
Correct, it would be a joint decision.
I would be for that, because this is going to be rare. I mean, the Guardian program sort of falls into that, but we're doing that together if that passes. So we're already sort of on that page.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Recent legislation suggests that this may become more often a question than it has in the past.
It may.
The concealed carry and the lack of a requirement for a permit, there may be more and more people showing up who are asking for permission. And so.
Right, that's.
Governance question is certainly a legitimate one, especially in these times.
I agree, it may be asked, I'm not sure it'll be granted. I'm not sure it'll be granted any more often, because the posted sign says visible or concealed weapons. So, I mean, in the lower paragraph there. So I think the policy reads well if we add "and" the school board.
Very good.
We have agreement there, everybody? Okay, good. If you add that, that'd be great. That actually took both my questions. Any other questions?
Before we go to Mrs. Morgan's last question, there is, I believe, a question on 7250.
And before you, before you get the question, I will tell you, this is not required by law. This is, this, this language is basically best practice, and it can be changed based upon the way you do business.
Any comments, Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. That was my question. I did have a question in this one, and I'm trying, and I couldn't find my notes, but it was regarding where it stated that the board could change the name at any time, which I thought was insane, because we go through a process in order to get to name a school or facility, but then we have a policy that says, well, we must do this, but then if we feel like it, we can just change that name. I believe that it needs to be a supermajority in order for that to ever take place. And I'm trying to find the line, so I apologize that I don't have that on.
It starts with under
The board may adopt, amend, or change the school names at any time.
Right.
And you would like to see it with a supermajority vote.
Yes.
I have no objection to that. Does anyone else? I don't see it happening, so
I don't either.
I think it should be rare. But, seeing no objection, if you would add that by a supermajority vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board members here on the 7,000? Ms. Morgan's question?
So Mrs. Morgan's last question is, it's more for clarification from the administration. It's 7543, utilization of the district's website. Section H requires a summary of all reported bullying incidents updated twice a year. So her question is, are we doing this? And if so, where is this located? And then there's another section that talks about the superintendent is charged with designating the district-approved social media platform sites, et cetera. Are we doing this as well, and where is it located? Some more for the administration to answer.
Ms. Patrica?
What was the second one?
The second one is, the superintendent is charged with designating the district-approved social media platform sites, which shall be listed on the district's websites. Do we do this, and if so, where?
Do we do this, Mr. Ramirez?
Do we do this, and if so, where?
So, so as a release to that question, I can, I can connect with staff to confirm, knowing that we do report it, but the where piece around that, and that often I want to confirm that. So, and I can provide an update, and a weekly update around that question. Okay.
If not, I think, I like the policy, so if we could correct it and make sure we're in compliance with the policy. I think it's a good policy. Will do. Any other questions?
The only other thing is, Ms. Morgan did share that she didn't have that many comments and questions this time, so she appreciates staff work. She sees a lot of background work that has been done on these policies.
I think we all agree with that. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Okay. Tom, I guess you had an early afternoon, unless you have something you would like to add to this?
No, I'm not going to push my luck. I think that we'll be able to spend some time productively this afternoon with staff as we approach the end of the line here. So this, this will give us some added time to do some more work. Thank you, board, for your diligence and your, your questions and your confidence in your staff.
Any final comments from the board? Yes, Ms. Patrica?
I just wanted to go back to the
Whoops.
I just wanted to go back to the small business one, if I could.
Oh, hold on, Tom.
No, no.
Okay, you're, that's right. I forgot we were holding that off. You're done. You're done.
So I think I just need to have my refresh, my recollection refreshed on B, eligibility and certification. The board may honor a valid SBE and/or minority business enterprise certification granted by the Office of Supplier Diversity. And I might just be confused, my memory might be failing me, but I remember, do I remember having a conversation, if I may, through the chair, to the board attorney about a minority business enterprise, and that requiring like a five-year study? And we were thinking about pursuing it in conjunction with the county and/or FGCU and other players, because it's a big undertaking and it's really expensive. So I'm not clear on whether this is even permissible, given the fact that we have not undertaken that study. I guess I don't understand how it fits in, given the fact that we've not done the study in Lee County.
I just pulled it up. Can you tell me specifically, you're looking at A?
It's B, eligibility and certification. And then, of course, MBE is used in other parts of the
You're correct, Mrs. Patrica, because we did have that discussion. Our policy is specifically a small business enterprise policy. We did not finish everything that was required to do the minority business enterprise policy. So I will go through this policy and make sure we clear that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, it may be entirely permissible for it to be in there. I just am not, based on my recollection of that workshop we had, I didn't think we were moving forward with it. And I, I'm not clear on how the language can be in there. If, do you understand my question?
Yeah, the statute allows the 10%, so that's clear. That's within the statute. The question is the process, and how do you justify it if someone were to challenge it? And that's what we were talking about. So I completely understand. I do remember that workshop. I'll make sure that we clear that up.
And then, if I may, another question for the board. The small, small business enterprise, are we, are we, under this policy, awarding contracts to vendors at a higher cost to the district in order to give business to small businesses? And is that being good stewards of taxpayer dollars?
So we have staff that's available here to answer that question.
Hi, Susan Malley, Executive Director of Business Services.
Is your mic on, Susan?
My mic's on. It's a good off. It's pretty good. Tom?
Okay, that one's live.
There you go.
Hi, Susan Malley, Executive Director of Business Services. Could you please restate your question for me?
Sure. So would we, let's say we have a contract for, I don't know, power washing driveways at every high school in Lee County, for $100,000 from a big vendor and $125,000 from a small business enterprise. Would we be, would we be giving preference to the more expensive contract in order to fulfill our desire to get small businesses more engaged with the district? And the second question is more for the board, is that being, if that's true, is that being a good steward of taxpayer dollars? Go ahead.
The goal of the small business program would be to identify work that can be performed by small businesses and solicit it just among small businesses. So we would carve out specific things that the small business community, where we've identified there are established small businesses, and then they would participate amongst one another. So there would be some exclusion or separation of large and small business contracts. So the, the strategy for award would be based on the specs. If it's a hard bid, low price wins. And then if it's a competitive solicitation with evaluation criteria, then the criteria would indicate the weight for price as compared to past performance and other items.
Okay, so may I?
Yes.
So there would, there could be circumstances where you, you, not you, you know, the, the district staff identifies work that can be done by a small business, and we're not even aware, we don't even consider whether there's a larger business who can do it at a more, at a cheaper price.
That is correct, if we were to solicit just within the small business community.
I have a question. What is the threshold price for soliciting from just small business? Is there a limit on the contract, 100,000? I think I read something somewhere, but I'm not sure.
So the criteria for the small businesses themselves, there are three criteria that define eligibility, and the revenue size of a small business determines whether or not they qualify for small. We have not identified specific contracts yet that we would know if there was a maximum ceiling, like, is this a $50 million project? You would think that a small business would probably not qualify, for example, to build a school, because they wouldn't be able to have the full complement of past performance and bondability. So one of the things that we're trying to do is we are targeting smaller scopes of work that our small businesses would be able to come in and begin a relationship, or grow their relationship with the business, to help them grow and potentially even outgrow the small business program. So there's not a dollar threshold for contracts, but we are sensitive to those firms that enroll in small businesses in our small business program. For example, we could assume pressure washing firms, that would potentially be a small business, and then we would solicit that as a small business, and therefore only businesses that meet the criteria for being small would be eligible to compete.
Okay. Worries me slightly, I love the idea of small business, but say the price comes in 10% higher on a million-dollar contract, if that, you know, because a small business might be able to do a million-dollar contract, than it would be if we went to an open bid, you know, that's $100,000.
So we would not be awarding to a small business over a large business because there was 100,000?
You said, large businesses would not be, if it's something a small business, say, pressure washing, every driveway in every school could be a large bid that a small business could do. So I, that is, that's a tough, that's a tough one. I have not thought of that. I'd like to see a ceiling of some kind, or broken up into multiple, or something like that, as a little guardrail, I think. Because $100,000 contract being a little bit higher is not a huge deal, and it helps out the local community. A million-dollar contract being a little higher starts to get into the taxpayer, we're not good stewards, so. Ms. Jordan? I'm just thinking out loud, excuse me.
And I'm thinking, I'm thinking, yeah, that's good. So what I, but when you're saying that, so if you have a big company who would then sublet or bring a smaller company in to do that, so why not give it to the smaller one? Versus giving it to, because is a larger company going to have everything that's needed as they separate those, those jobs?
No, I agree. Most of the time, on a smaller job where they subcontract, we end up paying more. That's why I like the, the smaller type things there. But it could be, I don't know how, on the bidding process, a lot of times a large company already has all the pressure washing equipment and has their own people, and they can come in and do it at a lower price. So, again, we got to sort of be fair here, both ways, and that's not an easy type road to walk. That's why I'd like to see some kind of, what is the highest bid we have done recently for a only small business? Has there been an amount that you can tell us that went out? Was it in the millions, or 100,000s, or?
So we are standing up the small business program now. The board adopted the small business policy, and now we are standing up the program. So we have not yet issued a small business-only contract. I can tell you one area that we are interested in pursuing is we have continuing contracts. And currently, we have a continuing contract for trades below a threshold, maybe 200,000, and below, between 200,000 and 4 million. So one of the strategies we're looking at is having the under, the two projects with a value of 200,000 or less to only be able to be bid by small businesses, and open competition for work up to 4 million. So that helps the small businesses be able to engage, compete against one another, and at that level, it is unlikely that a bond would be required, or if so, the bond wouldn't exceed 200,000.
I could live with those guardrails, I don't know, myself. Again, I can only speak for myself.
Can I?
Yes.
I'm sorry if this is somewhere in here, and I just can't find it, but is there, is part of the criteria for the Small Business Enterprise program closed off to all counties, but Lee?
No. I think what might be helpful, Mr. Ramirez, if we bring forward a presentation to the board of the status of the small business program. It is evolving, and we have taken it, taken it to the community. We have received feedback, and our next step is to present that feedback to the board, and it includes the criteria that we would measure small businesses against, and the board would have input to that before we finalize that and proceed.
Chair Vannelli?
Has any of this gone through the construction advisory, any of their opinions or anything like that? I just thought about that when you mentioned that.
The Construction Advisory Committee, Finance Advisory Committee, and Equity and Diversity have been presented the criteria multiple times, as recently as February, and so we're refining our, the program that we intend to present for the board to move forward.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Patrica?
And I, I really appreciate the suggestion, because I was going to ask for the same thing, for a presentation from staff, so we can see where we are in the process. And I have received feedback from the community as well, which is why I'm pushing back a little bit at this point, because there is concern about whether, and I don't, about whether I'm being a good steward of taxpayer dollars by approving this and by supporting it. Number one. Number two, is there any way for us to get data? Is there any way for us to, and I might be asking a question that can't be answered, but is there any way for us to, to look and see on previous bids, what large companies charged, or what large companies bid versus what small companies bid, what that difference is, so that we, as a board, have an understanding of what we're talking about in terms of large round numbers?
Right.
And if you can't, if that, if that data doesn't exist, it doesn't exist, but that's how my brain works.
Right. Because the program, we are just now defining the criteria for what is small, we wouldn't have information on how many of the businesses we're currently working with are small, because that criteria is being formulated.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. In that regard also, and I'm not trying to pile more onto this, but I don't know if this is something, if we can look at how others, does the county do anything like this? Do any other school districts do anything like this? Again, I don't want to blow up the scope with this, but just to get an idea. So, you know, I agree with everyone up here. So I'm a small business owner, as much as many of us are. I'm a small business owner champion. It's something I take pride in, but, you know, like Member Patrica said, we're stewards of taxpayer money. So, you know, some of the, the concerns that like this? Do any other school districts do anything like this? Again, I don't want to blow up the scope with this, but just to get an idea. So, you know, I agree with everyone up here. So I'm a small business owner, as much as many of us are. I'm a small business owner champion. It's something I take pride in, but, you know, like Member Patrica said, we're stewards of taxpayer money. So, you know, some of the concerns that came up here are some of the things I'm thinking about. So whatever extra information or data we could get would be appreciated. So, thank you.
Ms. Jivinelli.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher, because that's actually what I was going to say. I'm just curious what other districts, maybe what their best practices is in this situation? So if we, I don't know if there's, what districts actually have this policy already in place that's been working and how it's working. So I agree with him. I would love to see some information from other schools or even county. That was a great suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah.
Right.
That'd be great for the workshop.
As we developed the small business enterprise policy, that we reached out to school districts and counties and the state. And so one of the items that you referenced in the policy was leveraging the state's program for minority and small businesses. So that is the approach that we're taking is being as inclusive as possible. If somebody, if a firm is already certified by the state as a small business, we would want to welcome them in and use that certification.
Ms. Jordan.
Just one last thing. I just want to remind us, this has been something, this is not new. This has been something we have been speaking about for quite some time. So I want to make sure that the public, if they are listening, do not believe or feel that we are going against any, as Member Fisher said, small businesses are, make the world, really. So you didn't say that part, but they do. So I want to make sure that they are not thinking that we are against any small business at all, and that we need to really be mindful when we're talking about this.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little bit of a reminder, because this policy was adapted in 2021 and does have a very long history. Prior to that, there was a lot of vetting, a lot of work that was done by, I don't know if it was like two or three years prior to that, where they were gathering information, gathering data, doing the investigations in terms of what other districts are doing, making the inquiries, multiple workshops discussing, some of the workshops were very specific in terms of what the law is and what the requirement is. So there was a lot, a lot of work that was put into this policy when it was eventually adopted in 2021. So I just wanted to let the Board know that, that there is a very long history about this policy. And then to Ms. Malley's point, and also to Ms. Patrica's original question, I actually went back and just double-checked to make sure that the policy that we just reviewed was our policy, not Niola's policy, and it is exactly our policy. So when this policy was adapted, and I believe this is what Ms. Malley was addressing, the only section that talks about MBE, which is the minority business, would be the eligibility certification to participate in the program. So this is not the, this is not a minority business enterprise policy, but if you have that certification approved by the state, you could participate in the small business enterprise policy to get awards. So that's what that reference was. But I will still talk to staff in terms of the necessity to have that MBE in there.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Ramirez.
So just as a follow-up, just to be clear on the next step, the will of the Board to have a presentation come forward, providing an update on our small business enterprise program?
Yes, I think an update. I don't think we need the full presentation there. I just think we need to make sure, as stewards of the taxpayers' money, that there, that we can understand if this is going to, what the fiscal impact it will have on the district, if there's any way to anticipate that. If it's minute, then that's great. If it's huge, that would be awful. And I imagine somewhere in between. So we would appreciate that.
We will work with Dr. Savage to get that scheduled.
Thank you.
And just for my purposes, Board, I just want to make sure, because this policy did have that language in there in terms of the eligibility and certification, does the Board want us to change that at this point? I just want to make sure I have clarity. That's in Section B of the policy, eligibility and certification. It talks about, the Board may honor a valid SBE or MBE certification. So do you want me to take that out? Because that's the only place that it is mentioned in the policy.
All right, Ms. Patrica.
So yeah, the reason why I asked was that I just couldn't remember, and if it's legal for it to be in there, and I don't think you would bring forth something that was illegal, but given the fact that we hadn't done it, I was confused as to why it was in there. But you've refreshed my recollection, so I'm comfortable with it staying.
Okay.
And if I heard correctly, it does say "or."
Yes. And it's only for the certification, so you can participate in the small business enterprise program. That's it.
So it doesn't exclude anyone if they're one or the other?
No.
So that's good. Okay, thank you. Job on the spur of the moment.
Yes.
Okay, any other comments before we move on to the agenda review? Yes?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make sure that I share with the Board and also for members of the public, so they're understanding what the next steps are. On May 17th, that will be the last Niola workshop. That workshop will have all of the academic services policies, anything relating to students, anything relating to programs. It's going to be probably 70 to 80 policies. In addition, any other policies that are kind of, we need to come back to the Board because the corrections were needed, or the remaining policies in the 6,000s, all of that will also come on May 17th. So I want to make sure that's clear. Thereafter, on June 13th, we will be going to first reading on the entire book, all of the policies together. So this is the opportunity for any members of the public who have concerns about any of the policies that the Board has been going through, to be able to either make comments during the briefing or send emails prior to, I would prefer emails prior to, because right after that, on June 27th, we will be going to the full adoption of these policies and sunsetting our current Board policies. So I want to make sure everyone is clear on the timeline. And we had some discussions in the past about track changes. On May 17th, all of those policies that have been changed, you will be able to see them at that time, and then June 13th, you'll have the clean versions. They won't show track changes. Everybody okay with that timeline and schedule?
Yes, and thanks for bringing it up for the public, so now when to respond.
Thank you.
Okay, any other? Okay, Mr. Ramirez, if you would like to go over the agenda.
So, Mr. Chair, at the time of this Board workshop, there were no Board member questions specific to the agenda. If there are any at this time, I will take them, and if I'm able to provide an answer at the meeting, we can provide a Board update.
Ms. Patrica.
We cannot let him off this easy. Come on, come on.
Seeing none. Going once, going twice, going three times. Okay, thank you. You did a great job there, Mr. Ramirez. Board members, do you have any comments for today's meeting? Mr. Fisher?
Just wanted to thank the administration, the staff for their continuing dedication and movement on repairs for hurricane damage in the district. I appreciate it. So, thank you. That's all I have for this moment.
Ms. Jivinelli.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Ms. Patrica.
No, thank you.
Ms. Jordan.
I was really thinking hard, but I have nothing.
Ms. Lefler Fleming.
I don't have anything. Just very appreciative of all the people that were able to come in and on the spot, give us information about questions that we had. So thank you very much. It did not go unnoticed. Thank you. That's all.
I have something. How about that? You don't get to leave? I just want to mention, and I think we all will be doing this and should be doing it, doing community engagement. I know tomorrow, no, tonight, there is one for the hurricane.
Town Hall.
Town Hall, the Task Force Resilience at St. Carlos Elementary School, and I'll be going to that. I know I've been asked to speak at various clubs. I know they, I speak for myself when I go to those clubs. They always take the picture off our website, and I'm sure they'll do the same for you all if you volunteer to go for a community and they want a headshot or whatever. It has like a quarter of the seal in my headshot. But again, the first thing I always say when I speak to these clubs is, I'm on the Board, but I'm speaking for myself, but I'm really giving updates to the community, and that's my purpose for going out there, promoting the district. We have the new bill that's been passed for the, so I can go to the voucher bill, excuse me, I'm searching for that word. So we need to promote our schools, and I would like to encourage all of you all to speak to the public as much as possible, because I believe our school system's the best, and we want to keep it that way. And I think students, it should be promoted. Yes, Ms. Jivinelli?
I just want to thank you for being a great leader and being the chairman. You're doing a great job. So I appreciate that. We have to be in the public. We have to be in the community, and we have to engage. If we're not, then we become a Board that doesn't care. So I appreciate all your efforts that you do, and you're being a great representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I know a lot of you all are going around already also, so it's not only me. But thank you, and your check will be in the mail. Not really. I'll take that. Okay.
Oh, you're in trouble.
I know, I know. I shouldn't say they like this. Okay, at this point, having no other business to come before this body, and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned. The time is 12:56. Thank you for coming.